Oh, yeah, sure, okay. Well, Jeff was just coughing all over it, so.
I don't want any COVID in my spot.
Don't open any envelopes from me. Give him another minute.
Oh, there he is.
Talk to me, talk to me. What? I didn't quite understand that. We're good to go? Where's Jason?
I did.
Is he up there, Tom?
Yep, he's up there.
All right, let's start the plating agents.
The plating agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King. King.
Here, present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda, remove IO addition.
Ten, ten, number ten.
Or ten, okay, I'm sorry, excuse me. Remove number ten addition, now I need a motion.
Number ten plus.
So move. Back it.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number two, we need a motion approving the minutes for May 4th, 2020, need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number three, under recognitions and awards, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the city of Austin recognizes that as a community, we are all looking for ways to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic to slow the spread of the virus and to minimize loss of life and to lessen impacts on our citizens and businesses. And whereas the city recognizes that anyone of any race or national origin can become sick from COVID-19 and/or carry and transmit the disease. We ask that all practices kindness, all practice kindness at this time and not participate in discriminatory actions due to baseless fears. And whereas each of us has a personal responsibility to prevent the spread of misinformation, support all fellow community members, and to reject stigma, hate, and bias in all forms. Let's see, where am I here? In all forms. And whereas there have been reported incidents of possible discrimination and racist remarks towards Asian-Americans during this time of pandemic. And whereas hate and bias are not acceptable in our community. The city council remains committed to our vision of welcoming the world and recognizing our diversity as a key strength for the city and our character. And whereas the city of Austin affirms the safety and dignity of all residents, we continue working together as one community to protect the health of everyone. Austin is a welcoming city, working to ensure that we continue to do so by being inclusive to all, making Austin not just a place to live, but one that we can truly call our home. This disease does not discriminate, and neither should we. Whereas in these times of social distancing, residents have the ability and the obligation to report incidents of bias and hate, in person or online from the safety of their homes or residences to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights without fear and retaliation. Now therefore, I, Thomas H. Steen, Mayor of the city of Austin, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim our ongoing support for embracing diversity and ensuring a welcoming environment for everyone in our community. Austin strongly stands against hate, bias, or violence based on race, nationality, gender, disability, or religion, and I urge all residents to come together and support their neighbors during its unprecedented time. As a community responding to the challenges brought by COVID-19, we are stronger together. Thank you. I very much support that. I mean, we are.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, community of diversity, we're changing. We need to accept that. We need to move forward with it. We need to embrace it. There's no room for hatred in our community based on race, religion, or any of that other stuff. Okay, number four is a motion for the consent agenda. We need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number five is a resolution under petitions and requests approving a SMPA power sales contract on behalf of Austin Utilities. That's it, Mark. Are you here, Mark? Mark, you're there. You're up, Mark.
Um, I don't really have anything else to add other than what I presented at the work session last week or two weeks ago. So if there's any questions, I'll entertain answering those otherwise I look at the council's proposal on the amendment.
Thank you, Mark. Council, any questions? If not, we need a resolution for number five. So move the resolution. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six, I know this is like a dagger to the heart for a lot of us, most of us, but canceling the 2020 fireworks and Fourth of July event. Any questions on this? We talked about it. We kicked it around. All right, if not, we need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. This is another tough one. Number seven is a motion for closing the municipal pool this year. Need a mo-- is there any questions on this? If not, we need a motion. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution approving a labor agreement, memorandums of agreement for Austin Associates Organization. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor members. This is the three-year agreement with Austin Area Associates Organization. This has been approved by the bargaining unit members. This establishes the BPS, as we've done with other bargaining groups, has an MOU for retroactivity and makes the other adjustments as outlined in the memo. Otherwise, we need a motion to approve.
Council, do you have any statements or questions on number eight? If not, we need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six one, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with Hormel Foods. Mr. Lang.
This is a revision of a previous agreement that was adopted back in December of 2019. The revision includes eliminating the need for a discharge meter and all their flow calculations will be based on their incoming water meter, so we would recommend this change and to a modification to the five-year agreement with Hormel Foods.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for number nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Abstain.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero with one abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you. We've eliminated ten. Eleven is a resolution approving a construction grant agreement for the Austin Public Television Project. Kirk?
Uh, thank you, Mayor members. This is the next step in the KSMQ agreement. This is an agreement with the Department of Employment and Economic Development at the state so that we can allot the funds from the bond proceeds from the state and marry the other funding sources to that. This has been internally approved with deed officials. Our amount of $475,000 actually has come in at $460,856, so below our commitment amount. We need to return this for deed for their final signatures. Eric Olson is on the Zoom call and can add further comment and background for the project.
Eric, I see you got all dressed up. What do you got for us?
Hi, Mayor, council members. I have a brief presentation of the timeline. Would you like that, or I don't want to take up time?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. They were turning the volume up.
Hello? Are you hearing me okay now?
I can hear you now.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, I've shared, I think I'm sharing my screen.
You got, yeah, we can see ya.
All right. How about that? You getting that?
That's perfect, no.
Council members, thank you.
If we can hear you, yeah.
Uh, from our board and from all of us at the station, whatever goes on here, just thank you very much. It's been over a year of a lot of dedicated work by your staff who really helped us out a lot, helping educate us. Thank you very much, council members and residents for the land and the site preparation. Like I said, the support and ongoing fiscal agent service for our exciting new project, hopefully that you are considering approving. Anybody remember or recognize that? That's how we started. We've been in Austin forever since '72, and we've been doing a lot of looking back in our archives, KAVT, as in Austin Voc Tech TV. We were at first, we were a vocational tech providing educational programming through the region. That was through the 1970s. You may remember QTV, which we let ourselves marketed us, and we changed the call letters to KSMQ, which at the time stood for, and still does, Southern Minnesota Quality. But we were known as QTV during the 1990s and the 2000s. We adopted more of the PBS model with the little logo there. PBS began to tell us they were going to change their branding standards. In 2018, we moved and removed the PBS mark and put in that we were KSMQ TV, the better choice. And coming up next year for what will be our 50th anniversary celebration and hopefully breaking ground and building a new facility, we have a new look for 2021. So that's the new standard for PBS and our look going forward. But it's the programming we do. We air all over southeastern Minnesota. We like getting compliments like this, best thing on TV this weekend. That's one of our locally produced shows, Our Town, about Rochester. To reiterate for folks who may not know, we broadcast in all or part of 22 counties and a maximum OTA at the bottom of the screen, that means over the air, maximum viewers is 709,000. That's an estimate that PBS and Corporation for Public Broadcasting, looking at our transmitter signal strength. There's a little crosshair in the center of that map. That's near Grand Meadow. That's where the thousand-foot tower is, where we transmit our signal to that whole circle area there. This is the board of directors that I have at KSMQ Public Television. They will be guiding and directing me should you approve this tonight. As you can see, we have a lot of folks from Austin, but some else in the region. Our chair, Ted Hinchcliffe, from the Hormel Institute of Price Care, Pat Schwab. I should also point out that in 2016, back when this process began, we were led first by Roger Valton and then Pam Bishop, who also provided leadership to this project, getting us to where we are now. And the other board members down below, Councilmember Steve King, Jeremy Kleinfeldter, Donnelly Law Office, Kim Norton, the mayor of Rochester. He's a longtime House member, also in the state legislature. She helped a lot when we were working on the bonding legislation. Jennifer Gumbel, local attorney with the Hoferston Firm, Miguel Garrate from Riverland, and Jeff Baldis, chairman of the county board. This is where we are to tonight. I said we started in 2016. We had to prove a lot of things to the state of Minnesota. We are serving as a public purpose. We have public ownership, capital expenditures qualified, funding is in place. State agencies reviewed our plans and again worked with the city a lot since it's through you folks and can't say enough about all that, all that stuff. That expertise is really valuable in the city of Austin and kudos to the legal folks and engineering and the management approval of the use lease agreement. And then finally, over the last, I'd say, four months, we had some delays at the state level, not just because of COVID, but just the management and budget, getting our agreement through them took a little extra time than we had thought, and then through deed, but there were no problems. It was just, it took longer and brings us to tonight, to the grant agreement for the city.
Thank you, Eric. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, was there?
Did I cut you off?
Nope, I just, here's the milestone schedule. Should you approve, we look at June, November, kind of reramping up with our building design and pricing, then getting approvals permits, order our lead time materials in February, April construction, and move in in December. And we will begin meeting immediately with our team that KSMQ has in place. Forty-five North Group is the project manager, architect, MSR Design, and McGuff is the general contractor, and they were great in providing an updated list, timeline for your document that you have in your materials tonight with the grant agreement. And that is kind of where we are at tonight. Very exciting, hopefully very exciting step forward for Austin and the region.
Thank you, Eric. I think we're looking forward to it. Council, do you have any questions or comments? If not?
So, Eric, any concerns, you know, with the state fiscal situation, or, you know, NPR just finished their fundraising and they were talking about, you know, the challenges that they've got from a funding standpoint? Any reason for concern that something's going to trip this thing up at the last minute, or everything feeling pretty good?
Well, you know, I can't speak for NPR. I know they're a very large organization. We are not. We're one of the smallest, we are the smallest PBS station in the country with 12 employees. We get our funding from a variety of sources, but it is up to politicians in the federal government, in Congress, through CPB, although we've been on the air since '72, that same model. And during the COVID thing, if that's any, any, uh, any reason to discuss, I mean, the Corporation for Public Broadcasting, who is the entity we receive our federal funding through, was approached by the federal government, and we received, KSMQ received $230,000 in the, in stimulus funds because we are looking at about a 14% drop in our revenue for the rest of the year. So it's a battle that nonprofits have all the time, but I feel real, real good about whatever form we take. We still have the television license. We are still a nonprofit organization, and we're operated through the good grace of the FCC, and they want us to succeed. And so they change rules from time to time to allow us to do things that we can't do right now as far as how we get revenue. There are a lot of things we can't do, and the overall assumption is that if things got hairy, that rules could be changed so that we could also, but, you know, for instance, we can't take any advertising money. We can't take any political money. And that's fine. That's part of the nonprofit mission. But, you know, in a worst-case scenario, I think they look at those aspects of our licensing agreement that they could change.
Any other questions for Eric? If not, what is this, 11?
I'm sorry?
Somebody say something? If not, we need a resolution for 11.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly. Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye. And to be clear, the no was to the dog. It was not to the boat. I am an aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12 is a resolution approving change of control for Jaguar Communications and extending the term of, I don't know if it's two pages, the term of franchise through December 31st, 2021. Mr. Clerk.
I think you, Mayor members, this resolution does two things. It transfers ownership to MetroNet, and it also extends the agreement through December 31st of 2021. Basically, the resolution has sort of four buckets to bring MetroNet or Jaguar piece into conformance with the charter franchise that we have within the city. It has a calculation of a bigger piece of gross revenue that mirrors the charter agreement. It also has references that they have to abide by our right-of-way restrictions and also abide by the customer service standards and as well as the peg fee requirements. Those are four extensions from the charter agreement that we're adding into the MetroNet agreement moving forward. This area is just the annexed, formerly annexed area of Lansing Township. That's a part of the city and doesn't cover the entire city. It is exciting to see interest in moving into the Austin market. At this point, they're just looking at the annexed area, but if things go well and progress, hopefully we'll see MetroNet with interest in expanding across the city of Austin. But at this point, we need a motion to approve the resolution as provided.
Council, any questions? If not, we need a resolution for 12. So move the resolution. Okay, Jeff, who's the second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Um, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 13 is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. Self-manitaur need a resolution. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is a resolution approving a grant application for supplemental teaching staff at the nature center. Mr. Nelson.
This application is actually a backup in case the legislature does not release the funding which was for the three-year cycle, which was to begin this summer. So remember, one grant is already in place. If legislature releases that, we're okay for the next three years for this grant-funded position. If they do not, our deadline for submitting the next application is actually by June 1st. So this is the last council meeting prior to that time, so this is in place of a backup plan.
We need all the grants we can get right now. Council, any questions on this? If not, we need a resolution for 14. So move the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Paul?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a motion reviewing a planned unit development concept.
Skip 15.
Skip 15. Reviewing a fence appeal from Joaquin Oliverz and Yessinda Maldonado. Holly, please, Holly.
Uh, yes, Mayor, council members, Mr. Oliverz and Ms. Maldonado brought a, an appeal to our fence requirement, fencing requirement of a 12 and a half foot setback on corner lots. So just a little bit of background, they wanted to convert their chain length fence into a privacy fence. They have two dogs and they've had some negative interactions with people walking by, which, you know, most of us can imagine. They do have room for the setback, but there is a, an existing irrigation system which would present some difficulties potentially. So they appealed and brought this to our planning commission. The commission reviewed the appeal. After the appeal, the planning commission recommended five to one that the, the appeal be approved with the conditions that the fence not extend past the north base of the home. And if it did go into the front yard, there's different height requirements, and then also there's a driveway on the north side of the property which crosses a sidewalk, which visual obstructions are a concern, but in the back and on the side, that is not a concern. So they, so therefore the recommendation for approval. Do you have any questions on that?
Any questions, council? If not, we need a motion.
So move.
So move.
Okay, Joyce and Paul. Paul, is that a second?
Second.
That's a second. Okay, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Is that me?
Yes, sir. King.
Uh, aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, I'm sorry, motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a motion reviewing a planned unit development concept submitted by Curtis Sorensen. Holly?
Yeah, so the, your motion would be to approve or disapprove a concept plan for plan development. As you know, there's very complicated regulatory background with regard to this property. And as a result, Mr. Sorensen, the petitioner, has moved forward with a possible middle option rather than rezoning the property commercial, which would allow a very broad number of commercial uses at the location, which is a very small parcel located in a primary, primarily residential district. We've started working on a planned development process, which is somewhat similar to our process of establishing a new subdivision. So it's a very complicated process for the petitioner potentially, but, but it allows the use that the petitioner wishes to establish in that area without having the broader impact of rezoning to a commercial, to our B2 commercial. Can you still hear me? Are there some technical difficulties?
We can hear you. We can hear you good.
Okay, okay. So, so Mr. Sorensen has So Mr. Sorenson has presented us with a concept for a plan development. We will go through that more in-depth in the future, but at this point, it's basically kind of just the gateway of saying, is this something that we want to have the petitioner spend more time on? Is this something we want to have staff and the council and planning commission spend more time on? And if so, then the petitioner would move forward with the process in establishing the use that he would like to see in that area. The matter was reviewed at our May 12th, 2020 meeting. We had, or two members from the public attended. Glenn Medgarden, who was the owner of the property, he has sold that to the petitioner by contract for deed. He is in favor of moving forward with the concept. The other member of the public was Bob Helmers, who attended in person. He is basically following this matter because he owns adjoining property and had been a previous owner of the same location and is asking, as a fairness matter, that he have the same opportunity as Mr. Sorenson for his adjoining lot. He's not necessarily opposing or supporting, but it depends on the result, I guess, what his response will be. I did talk to the immediate neighbors who have a nice residential property immediately adjacent. They just called via telephone. I spoke to Mrs. Thiessen. I described what the plan development would entail and restrictions on that type of development, and they seemed a little less worried about what might happen at that location. Not completely 100% happy about it, but they felt like they should live with it if that was the ultimate, ultimately approved. Let's see. If you want to know, I did include a lot of the technical details about how a plan development is established and how that might work with this current proposal. We did go through that all in detail with the planning commission, and ultimately, the planning commission voted to recommend the concept be approved five to one. And that was, the discussion primarily was of how the concept might impact the area and whether the proposal was. Okay.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, so with the adjacent property owned by Bob Helmer, would he have to come up with his own plan development plan then, or would his be included in this one?
No, they're two completely separate issues. I just mentioned it because I always share with the council and planning commission any information that has been presented to me by the public. So just for your information, he may or may not decide to move forward at this point until we get an application from him. He has not made an application yet.
Okay.
So we'll see. No, it's two completely separate matters.
Thank you, Holly. Any more questions?
I do, but Holly, wouldn't there be a precedent issue? If this was approved, there'd be some precedent set and would make it, make Mr. Helmers more likely to think that his application would be approved as well?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Helmers, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but he, you know, he calls me regularly. I've had five calls with him since Friday, and he was very concerned about how everything was proceeding with Mr. Sorenson's project, and he wasn't able to make it to the meeting tonight. He had a conflict, but it's very fact-based, and there are quite a few differences between the two properties. So, I mean, you could argue that it's making a little easier for Mr. Helmers to bring a similar request forward, but if you look at the two properties, you know, there's the one that Helmers owns, and he can make his own arguments, but he has a vacant lot that was previously residential, the home was demoed on that lot. It's never been used for anything else, whereas on Sorenson property, there's an existing building, and it has previously been used as a commercial location. So I mean, and I, not arguing either way for one or the other outcomes, but...
So I guess what I'm thinking of is if, is when you're in a more straightforward zoning decision, precedence more of a concern? This is already so specialized because of the way they're doing these individual applications for the properties, already so specialized that precedent becomes less of an issue? Is that, would you characterize that as a correct understanding?
Well, I mean, we have talked about this before. I mean, it would be pretty unique circumstances where this would be an issue. You know, I don't know if Mr. Byram wants to throw in, but, you know, a non-conforming use that's expired, or, yeah, I don't know, like, yeah, I mean, really, it is, you know, we don't, we are working on our zoning code, and we'll come up with some, you know, more moderate options for these kinds of situations, I think. But in the meantime, you know, we have two extremes, really, and trying to get to a result that I guess, you know, we've been kind of getting the, or the staff or myself has been getting the, you know, kind of the direction that they do, that the council does want to see a business there. So trying to, you know, work through some kind of option that we currently have to allow that to happen, you know, this is, this is not the most ideal option for the petitioner or for staff, I think, from a regulatory perspective, which is what you're getting at. But yeah, I mean, people can always make the argument that it's a precedent, but it's really a very fact-based, and this requires a lot of participation and effort on part of the petitioner. You know, I'm not sure that everyone's going to be up for it, especially for a small business. Did that answer your question somewhat?
Okay. Any more questions for Holly? If not, we need a motion to approve or deny.
I think the only thing I would say is, I wanted to compliment Holly, you, and the work of Curtis and Glenn, and I think the planning commission. You know, when this came before us in November, we kind of had an A or B, black or white choice. I think you guys have done, I know it's been a lot of work, and I think you've done a really, really nice job of trying to find a middle solution to get a business on a vacant lot for something that it's been used for for 25 out of the last 27 years. You know, I think it helps our community, it's going to help the business, and so I really appreciate the flexibility. And I think, to me, the fact that the planning commission is recommending it, and we're not being asked to, say, overturn a planning commission recommendation is really, really powerful. So I think it definitely makes sense to approve it.
Anything else, Jason? If not, we need a motion to approve or deny.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, or motion passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 17 is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 1004 Fourth Avenue Northeast Lane Properties. Need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, Your Honor.
B 1308 Ninth Avenue Northwest, the Adania Jimenez property, need a motion.
Can I just ask a question real quick about this to Holly?
Sure.
Okay, so Holly, I just have a question real, is she there?
Yep.
She still there? Okay. Some of these, I've noticed that some of these names seem to pop up sort of frequently. Is there an increase in the fine, or is there anything that happens when you're kind of a repeat offender on some of this stuff?
Yeah, yeah, we do increase our fines. There's a percentage increase for each additional fine within a two-year period.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we're at 1308 Ninth Avenue Northwest. Did we do that one? We need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, Your Honor.
And finally, 404 Main Street South, the Howard property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, Your Honor.
18, accepting an FAA cares grant. Stephen, I believe, who is this?
Stephen.
David?
We, as part of the federal stimulus package, there were dollars available for the FAA, and those dollars are being distributed to local airports, and the city of Austin is eligible for a $30,000 FAA grant that would occur for the next four years as the money is available. So this, we've identified this as an opportunity to apply that $30,000 to our operation and maintenance costs that we have out at the airport. This would be above and beyond the $51,000 that we already receive from the state, so we would look to apply both of those toward our maintenance and operations costs, which on a normal year are in excess of $100,000. So we would request tonight to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute this grant with the FAA so that we can secure our $30,000 of funding per year for the next four years.
Counsel, we need a resolution. So moved the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. We're now two citizens addressing the council. Are there any citizens out there that want to address the council? I see a couple of names up there. This is your chance. Anybody? Okay, if not, we're to honorary councilmember, I'm going to wait, I'm going to have you wait until we're done. We're at council reports. I'm going to start out tonight because I have a few things to say, and then I want to give council the chance to respond. I was disappointed to read the article in the Herald criticizing the high levies for the next couple of years. It was criticizing council for an issue we have not even addressed. The figures were always preliminary, and we all knew they would be revised by September when they are due. I want people to know that council is well aware of the changes in our society, and that business as usual is not sustainable for us. We will address the levy, and I'm sure it will be lowered very much. I received a call on Sunday from Councilman Baskin, and we spoke at length. I told him I felt he had shown a lack of respect to council, and I felt that the article was very self-serving. Afterwards, I felt Jason's intentions were honorable and just not well thought out. Council doesn't need a special interest committee to tell us that people are scared and want their taxes lowered. I stand behind the raises we have negotiated to our employees via the comp and class study. Yes, the timing is poor, but it's fair. What I'm going to propose for council for next year is a levy increase of between 0 and 4%. To get to 4% or below, we will have to reduce our workforce. There are several ways to do this, and we need to explore them all. Many people don't realize the mayor has a veto, but I don't think it's ever even been used, but I will veto any proposed increase over 4% for 2021. Yes, a majority can override a veto. Good luck. We need to set staff working on this so you can put proposals in front of council as soon as possible. Also, Saturday was my wife's birthday. I gave her what she said was the best thing I could have. I told her I would not seek another term as mayor. It was like a weight was lifted off my shoulders. I still have seven months in my term, and we are in the middle of very scary times. I will try to provide the best leadership possible at that time, and I will always be grateful to the citizens of Austin for allowing me the privilege of representing them the past 14 years as mayor. After this, we'll go through councils. Steve King, I know you have something you'd like to say. Stephen?
Yeah, you know, I, we've all probably been answering, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
We've all, you know, had a week of answering emails. I don't need to pile on, but I just think as a council, we do need to be careful of what we put out there, especially during a time when there is a crisis, and we certainly are not toned up to that crisis, and we know that it is going to hurt. I'm happy to hear the mayor say that we're sitting at, we're looking for a 4% or less. I was had an eyeball on that same thing. I've talked to Jason also. Jason, I told him, as I'm an elected council member also, we appreciate his perspective, and he comes at this with a business acumen, and we need that voice. So again, these times, crisis, I think caused us to consider decisions that we normally would not even consider. So I'm certainly supportive of that 4% or less, and I'd sure like the citizens of Austin to understand that we have not even really begun a deep dive, even a shallow dive into this levy, what it might mean in 2021, but I think be pretty well assured that it'll be 4% or lower, and it will hurt, it will cause some pain, and we're hoping for the least amount of pain from our city employees that are already lean, and we already sitting at a very low levy comparatively to anybody. When I answer the emails, I always forward what Mr. Dankert gave me, which was the state auditor's site that tells us how Austin is doing very well at lowest levy, you know, out of 233 states, we're 223. Also with spending, regard to spending, we are very low in spending by department, so we are sitting pretty well comparatively. I know that no matter what, everybody is not liking the tax increase, but we're hoping to get that down to a 4% or lower, and I wanted to say, I appreciate the mayor being mayor for 14 years, I really, I really, I've loved, I've loved being a city council member under you, Tom, and you've done a great job leading the city. I wish you nothing but the best, so that's what I have.
Thank you, Steve. Jeffrey?
Wow, yeah, I guess the week of answering phone calls and emails was a little overwhelming, but I guess we want the citizens to know that we feel their pain, and I know, having gone through several budget discussions over the years, we always take great pains in every increase that we do and try to provide the best services we can at the lowest cost to the citizens. As for your announcement, Mayor, I would say echo Mr. King's sentiments. We were elected at the same time and have served through the past 14 years together.
You're the only one left.
And it's been a pleasure serving alongside you and working with you. You're no Bonnie Reitz, but you've done, you've done an admirable job over the years, so congratulate you on your term and wish you well in the future, and we'll serve out the rest of this term with you.
Thank you. Jeff, Joyce?
Yeah, I just think the timing of all of this is just really difficult for everybody. We're discussing budgets and levies while going through a pandemic, and I know that all of us are, want to do whatever we can to lower the levy, to keep it low, and going forward as well. So we've all been busy kind of thinking outside the box, and I also have really, I mean, I've worked with you for a year and a half, but it's been very, very enjoyable. I think you've done a wonderful job for the city. I'm sorry to hear that you won't... I'm sorry to hear that you won't be rerunning, but I understand as well.
It's not a concession on my part. It's a good thing. It's a good thing for the city.
Yeah, all right.
We need new leadership after 14 years. It's somebody younger. Anybody be younger, I guess. Okay, Laura?
Hi, thank you. I found this T-shirt at Games People Play. It says, "We're in this together." And I wanted to wear it tonight because I've really just had that feeling over and over the past week, talking to people about the budget. We really are all in this together. It's our whole community. Everybody's affected by what we do in setting the levy and also by what we do in providing city services. So for me, I want to say that I find all of this communication by our constituents, by councilpeople, by city staff, by the mayor, all of this communication, to me, is very positive. I don't see anybody with a personal agenda or making personal attacks. I see people talking about the issues, maybe disagreeing about the issues, maybe disagreeing about the direction. But I have found that everyone has the good of Austin at heart. There's not anybody involved here who doesn't care about Austin and want to see the best for us. And getting more ideas, more communication on the table about the issue will only make it better. I really hesitate to ask people to sit back and keep their ideas to themselves. I, my personal perspective is bring your ideas forward, and I, they should be evaluated on their merits. And as a councilmember myself, I do not feel insulted by someone saying, "I don't like the levy you approved last year," or "the year before that," or "the year before that." We all can have our opinions. It's not personal. It's not about personalities. It's about the good of the city. That is my perspective. I also want to say, no one cares about the city of Austin more than Mayor Steen. I've been so impressed by his growth in the position since he first came in. I think that his knowledge base came way, way up to join his heart and caring for the city over the years. And I've really been impressed with that. And at the same time, I totally understand that 14 years of doing what you're doing is a lot on you and your family. And part of why it is, is because somehow in politics, in our community, and everywhere, it's not just Austin, people turn disagreements about issues into personal disagreements. They turn it into name-calling. And I just would like us all to do better and remember that we're talking about the issues. And we can disagree civilly and politely and with mutual respect. And I think for the most part, that's what's been happening with our council and in our community. But it's worth saying that that's really a key value. And that's the kind of community that I want to be involved with, is one where we're able to talk about all kinds of different ideas, we're able to evaluate things, put things on the table, and keep it to the issues and not about the personality. So thank you, Mayor Steen, for your service. And I look forward to the rest of the summer. It is going to be a deep dive into the budget. It is going to be a lot of tough decisions. And the more input that we have from the more different stakeholders, the easier those decisions are for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Let's see, how about Paul? I don't want to leave anybody to last. Jason, obviously you're going to be the last because I think you need to be able to respond to some of these things. But who did I just call on, Paul or Rebecca? Paul, go ahead.
I'm not going to say goodbye to the Marriott. He'll be around for a while. I just want to add that with everything going on in the world and with us trying to implement a classification study and looking at our tax levy, we've got some very difficult decisions to make. But I think this is, this council group is a wonderful group, and I know we'll make the right decisions.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I've taken a lot of phone calls and emails as well. And at first, I was a little kind of put off by it. But as the end of the week came and the weekend came, I enjoyed actually hearing from a lot of people from all over Austin. It wasn't just the first word. It was everyone throughout the city. And I get it, we're all going to feel this pinch. COVID-19 couldn't have been a worse time. However, I do stand behind the raises that we are giving our city employees. I feel that was an important thing we needed to do. But we will, at the council, I feel, will make the right adjustments to the levy that we need to make. And it'll all work out in the end. I firmly believe that we have some of the best heads of departments that can help us with cuts. And I think we have some great leadership in the city that will greatly help us make the cuts we need to make and do what we need to do to help the city of Austin thrive into the future. So I want the citizens to know that we heard you. We understand we're in this together. And I appreciate every phone call and email that I had to take over the last week.
Thank you, Rebecca. Jason, did you have something you'd like to say?
Oh, what?
I would just like to say, before Jason does, I would like to say, we had a very good conversation on Sunday. I was very impressed with Jason. I know his heart is in the right place. And I think it was just over-exuberance that, you know, he just didn't think of the effect it would have on council and things like that. But I think we're lucky to have Jason, and I don't mean to be too hard on him. Jason, with that, you can't.
Yeah, no, I did, thank you, Mayor. You know, thank you for your feedback. I have always valued and appreciated your perspective and the way that you view the world and have especially valued your leadership, you know, both in the time I've had the opportunity to serve on council with you as well as just being a citizen of Austin for enough years and having your leadership. I think we are, you know, you are leaving the community a better place than it was when you came in, and that's really the ultimate compliment you give to a leader. So thank you for that. You know, I value, thank you for the feedback from my fellow councilmembers. You know, I always value and appreciate your feedback. And I, you know, I know and always know that everybody's here at this table because we care about Austin and we want to do what's best for our community. And I also value and appreciate the perspective of the people who elect us. You know, as Paul, I think, said really, really well, we face some really tough choices. And the more that we can have our community engaged and have people making their voice heard regardless of what their opinion is, that's a good thing, because that's going to help us to make better decisions. And my goal from day one on the council is to transparently and openly communicate with the people that we all represent. You know, none of the information that I've put out has any intention to be critical. It was meant to be proactive and transparent so people could know how they're engaged in the process. Because what I hear a lot from people is that, "Hey, help me understand how to make my voice heard." And that was entirely the purpose of anything that was put out there. Nothing was inaccurate. If anybody felt criticized, if anybody felt that there was something inaccurate, you know what? I probably could have worded a couple of things better. And I, you know, I'm certainly accountable for that. You know, I've got a four and a seven-year-old. I'm the only male in the house. So certainly used to feedback. But ultimately, you know, I think it's not going to be an easy discussion, and it's not going to be an easy set of choices. The more that we can have the community involved, and I will never apologize for involving the community, the better choices are that we're going to make. And I think, you know, to build on what everybody's saying, we're going to need to be able to have a robust and honest discussion without emotional reactions, one way or the other. We need to be able to be proactive. We need to be able to put all options on the table. And so, and we need to hear the voices of the folks in the community. So I value the opinions of everybody that's in this room, whether virtually or in person. And I appreciate your feedback. My heart and goal are always to figure out, how do we engage the residents? How do we get the best decision made for the short and long term in Austin? And that's ultimately what we're elected to do and what we'll continue to do. So, thank you.
Jason, I knew from talking to your mom years ago you were going to be very, very motivated when you got in, and your heart is in the right place. And I look forward to working with you for the next six months, like I told you on the phone call. Our goals are going to end up being almost the same on this. Tactics, you know, could have been a little better. And I hope we can both take a little something away from that. Okay, follow that, Obala, Obala. It's your turn.
Well, I just want to say thank you, everyone here. I just want to say some few words. It's really shocking to hear Mayor is not going to run for reelection. But I just want to say, the reason why I'm here today is because of you, Mayor Tom. So I remember three years, four years ago, when I come to your office and without making any appointment and talk to one of the clerk there. I think you, the leadership that you have shown to Austin community has really showed that, like, this place is a better place. And me personally, I feel like I'm confident enough that I can raise my kid here. And very soon, in two months, I will be a father. So I just want to say that, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for being welcoming. For, from every corner of Austin, every immigrant, every refugee, everyone I talk with, the feedback I get from them, you're the coolest mayor. And I keep telling my mom that the mayor is cool, and my mom keeps saying the same thing. So, and then I just want to say, wish you all the best. And everyone here on the council here, I think most of you are really feeling welcome. And I'm looking forward to get involved more and help, you know, every resident in Austin with every decision here. I think it's part of leadership. And as Jason said, the people that elect us, they need to be informed and be involved in our community. So it's up to us, the way we want to lead our community. But so far, I'm so proud of every leadership here I'm seeing. And I'm looking forward to get more young involved in the leadership instead of leaving to the, you know, to the older folks only. Because I always say, a community without a youth is not a community because when something come, the youth are the one who will always stand up and go and defend the community. So I just want to say, thank you, Mayor Tom, and I wish you all the best. Looking forward to learn more from you, even if you leave the office. So I just want to say that.
Well, Obala, you know, you've been my guy ever since the day you walked into my office to announce that you were in town. I said, "Okay." And you said you were ready to do whatever it took and whatever you could. And you certainly followed through on that. I know you're going to go far. I know you have some thoughts about what you're going to be doing in the near future. I certainly support those. And you can call me at any time for anything you like. We're really proud of you, and we're looking forward to good things from you. So we're lucky to have you. Also, I'd like to announce to council, we are going to be running out of honorary councilmembers. Do we have one after Obala and, Obala, Obala? I think we might have one. But if council has more people they know that would like to be on the honorary council, please get them to put applications in. Okay, reports and recommendations from department heads, Craig. I don't want to hear anybody talking about hiring. Also, I should say, we've instituted a limited hiring freeze. I think, you know, we haven't really talked too much about it. What we're doing is, we're not hiring people except if we get an inspector that retires or somebody like that, and we're going to spend twice his salary contracting with other people to get that job done, we're probably going to hire that position. If it's something other, we're going to try not to for a while. We need to see what we can do to reduce things the easiest way we can on our workforce. Craig, did we have any reports?
Yeah. I've got news today, unfortunately, from the external sign variance committee. As members might recall, the MINDOT has a process for us to appeal. What we'd requested is a brown road sign on I-90 for the Spam Museum and Hormel Nature Center. Unfortunately, those were both denied. The Senate and the House concluded their business this year and adjourned signee die. Our bonding proposal was not included in the Senate version. They capped their spending at $998 million and no provision for the Austin plant. The House did pass, or, excuse me, did include our wastewater treatment plant for the $19 million that we'd requested in an overall $2 billion package. We understand there's been some general agreement of coming back for a special session and a total of $1.356 billion for the bonding bill. So hopefully, it'll be decided whether or not our funding can be included in that $1.35 billion. As far as working with you, Mayor, it's been an absolute pleasure. I don't think there's a more genuine elected official that I've worked with in my career. It's always been refreshing to work with you. You're caring and committed. Your work on Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and the League of Minnesota Cities is admirable that you recognize that Austin is a piece of the larger pie and impact on local government across the state. We've shared some pretty good laughs together. It's always good to have your humor around to lighten the moment. You've represented the city with the best interests of the city at hand, and I appreciate our friendship. So thank you so much, and we'll look forward to wrapping out your term.
Feelings are mutual, Greg. Absolutely mutual. You've been excellent to work with. I've enjoyed every minute. I consider you a friend. And that's kind of unusual, I think, for a city and a mayor. But I do, we've done a lot of things together, here and elsewhere. Anybody else?
Anne has something.
Anne?
Yes, I'd just like to note that filing opens tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM for the mayor's position.